Ms. Brown?
Yes.
I think so.
Sit down.
Okay. I call this April 28, 2025 meeting of the Newberry County Board of Trustees to order. We have a quorum present and Ms. Lake is on her way. Do we have any amendments to our agenda?
Madam Chair, we have one amendment to the agenda under executive session, Section C, legal updates. In addition to Mid-Carolina Middle legal update, we have an update for S C E C G.
That was S C E G?
S C E C G.
S C E G. What does that mean? I guess we'll find out.
Yes, I will provide the acronym for it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Anybody second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the hirings and separations, contractual considerations, the tennis courts at Whitmar Community School, and legal update, Mid-Carolina Middle School and S C E C G?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Anybody second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the hirings and separations, contractual considerations, the tennis courts at Whitmar Community School, and legal update, Mid-Carolina Middle School and S C E C G?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Anybody second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the hirings and separations, contractual considerations, the tennis courts at Whitmar Community School, and legal update, Mid-Carolina Middle School and S C E C G?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the hirings and separations, contractual considerations, the tennis courts at Whitmar Community School, and legal update, Mid-Carolina Middle School and S C E C G?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the hirings and separations, contractual considerations, the tennis courts at Whitmar Community School, and legal update, Mid-Carolina Middle School and S C E C G?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
We return to open session. We'd like to apologize for being a few minutes late this evening. Ms. Lake, would you lead us in our invocation, please?
Sure. Lord Jesus, you have placed the board and the superintendent in positions of leadership and service, Father, according to your purpose and will. I ask that you would guide us with wisdom and clarity as we make decisions that shape the future of our schools. Help us to lead with integrity, humility, and a deep commitment toward those we serve. May we recognize the different perspectives that each of us have, knowing that each voice adds value and strengthens our conversations. Help us to be able to work together in respect and in civility, appreciating the insights that each person brings to the table. Lord, I ask that you would give us your wisdom in times of challenges and that you would let our leadership reflect your grace and your purposes. I ask this all in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
We'd like to welcome all of you that are here with us this evening. It's so nice to see such a large crowd. And we'd also like to welcome our media that is watching us online. All right, is there any action from executive session?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the hires and transfers and accept the resignations of the administration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Presley, it is the recommendation of the administration to enter into a contract with MAR Construction under the design deal solicitation for the design and OSF approval of four new tennis courts at Whitmore Community School with a design cost of $44,770. After receiving OSF approval, MAR Construction will offer a guaranteed maximum price to complete the entire project. That price will be presented to the board before any work begins. So tonight I will need board approval to issue a notice to proceed for design.
Madam Chair, I'll move to accept that recommendation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to proceed with the plans for the courts?
Aye.
The design.
Right, the design, yes.
Thank you.
All right, and now we come to the best part of our meeting, our special recognition.
It truly is the best part. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Presley, tonight we're pleased to recognize the Little Mountain Elementary Archery Team. The top 15 elementary schools were chosen to compete at the state by taking qualifier scores. LME's archery team qualified for state by shooting a team score of 2809 for Bullseye and a score of 1501 for 3D at the Mid-Carolina High School State Qualifier Tournament. The Wildcats earned first place among elementary schools at that tournament. Then on Tuesday, February 25th, the team traveled to Columbia where they shot an impressive 2,920 to earn second place in the state for Bullseye and 1491 to earn second place in 3D. At this time, we are going to introduce the coaches and ask Ms. Sarah Eads, our coach, and Ms. Mack and Ms. Yarber if they would come forward to assist with the certificates. We would really appreciate it. And students, as you're coming down, if you would, you see where Ms. Mack is heading, come down that way and across the stage, and we'll get a group picture of everyone whenever everyone is up there. The archery team members are Ryan Baker, Sawyer Branham, Tribble Cates, Declan Cunningham, Quinn Friar, Barrett Havard, Henry Helms, Jackson Jones, Zachariah Coon, Mason Leon, Knowlton Lindler, Kelton Butler, Leah Gallman, Logan Gallman, Emma Hanger, Chloe Harlow, Emily Harvey, Ansley Hobby, Ella Call, Taylor Lake, Carolina Smith, Lilly Suber, Serenity Thompson, and Trinity Thompson.
Can we clap?
We can clap. And you can tell this is not Coach Eads' first rodeo with this. She's already getting everybody in order for the picture and even positioning herself. Thank you, Coach Eads, for that. And I'm gonna step out of the way and let y'all get some photos. We also have some individual recognitions. Ella Call, Ella placed first place in the state for the girls' individual 3D. Ella received a scholarship fund and a new bow.
Wow.
And Quinn Friar placed second in the state for the boys' individual 3D. Congratulations to all of you. And keep sharpshooting, right? We're also recognizing members of the Little Mountain Beta Club that placed at the state level. Beta sponsors are Ms. Leslie Anderson, Marcy Blanchard, and Jennifer Jones. So if y'all are here, if you wanna head on down, I see Ms. Anderson's here. And we've got Ms. Mack to assist with the certificates again. The performing arts group placed first at the state competition. The group performed to "Take Me Home Country Roads" and were awarded first place for their performance. Members of the performing arts group are Brent Branham, Kelton Butler, Michaela Conley, Elijah Kreminger, Declan Cunningham, Charles Edwards, Mara Ganey, Colin Gresham, Everett Hamm, William Hamm, Ansley Hobby, Hazel Jordan, Zachariah Coon, Taylor Lake, Maisy Lovelace, Addison Smith, Carolina Smith, and Skylar Stroud. Stand in between, in the front, in the front of her. Right there. We've got some more coming, too. This is just one group. So we've got a second place for the accessorized design group. Do you wanna get those up or you wanna go ahead and take this picture? Let's take this picture. And the Little Mountain Beta Club also had the accessorized design group placed second in the state. The club designed one piece of accessory depicting the 24-25 theme of radiate. The group designed a parasol. And I'll give five bucks to the person that can explain to me what a parasol is. We're gonna ask one of the kids, how about that? Members of the group are Cynthia Andrews, Riley Branch, Kellen Clayton, Gracie Mae Newton, Emma Shaw, Kenley Slaton, and Serenity Thompson. Congratulations to all the LMES Beta Club winners. Tonight, we're also recognizing two students from Newberry Middle School who won South Carolina ASC State Convention Student Government Positions. Cade Hamilton, Cade was elected- Cade Hamilton, Cade was elected second vice chair of District Six. And Julia White, Julia was elected second vice president for the state. And I see Mr. Reed is Ms. Coleman, I think you're the Beta sponsor if you'll come forward, and if there are any other Beta sponsors. Come up and get your picture taken here.
And excuse me while I pull up my notes. I do have one more recognition. This would normally be done in my superintendent's report. But we had a student that competed in the World Cup for twelve-year-olds. He not only represented his school, he not only represented our county, he represented our state and our nation. Because this young man competed in eight games over four days, over two thousand students were selected from twenty-six different countries to play in the World Cup. Our student, Issa Isaiah Meza, scored the winning goal in the, let me get this right. He played in the World Cup at the level twelve-year-olds. There were fifty teams, the Baraca Carolinas team from the U.S., in which is the team he played for, came in nineteenth in the overall tournament. And he scored the winning goal in the winning penalty goal against Luxembourg. Let's give him a round of applause. Come on up.
This young man was so proud to represent his school and his district, he was upset that he forgot his Newberry Middle School shirt that he was going to wear.
We've had one person sign up this evening, and just as a general reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes. And the Board does not comment back, but it does not mean that we are not taking notes and that we're not listening. All right, and this evening, we have Mr. Jaron Cannon.
Thank you to Mr. Presley and the Board for this opportunity to speak. I wanna first start off by saying, at the last board meeting, Mr. Gray made a great point about asking clarifying questions, and I do appreciate that because sometimes the community feels like they're not heard, but it could be simply because y'all don't know what we're looking for. So I'm gonna try to do my best to explain what I'm looking for from my comments. But again, I'm gonna say thank you. First, I would like to start off by saying, last year, y'all did the community forums, which I thought was a phenomenal idea, but I would suggest, since y'all are moving into the new calendar year, that y'all could do one not only in the fall but in the spring. Because there are certain concerns that we may have expressed in the fall, that we have some reoccurring things for the spring. I know public forums available, but it's different when we can hear you guys respond to the things that we ask. So the first thing I would like to say is that we make a public forum for the spring. The next thing, I know it's been requested numerous times, but the information that you all are discussing, talking about, it's difficult for us as the community members to have an active engagement, or even understand what you're talking about if we can't see what y'all are looking at. Sometimes it's difficult for us to make a clear, concise judgment about what you guys are saying if we are only basing it on trying to gather the pieces of information that y'all are sharing amongst each other. But if you can show us what you are looking at, that would be a great help to not only myself, but the community as well. And the last thing is, I've spoken several times about the condition of our school. And at the last community forum, not only did I, our PTO president as well, she had a display board, she presented pictures of our school. And it almost seems, and I wanna first, let me start off by saying, I wanna thank you guys for, I've noticed that we now have fire alarm system that you guys are working on, and we appreciate that, and we see that you're working on the door alarms. We appreciate that as well. But our concern is, in this last school year, we've had about ten classrooms where the ceiling's fallen from flooding. And it's almost like you walk into a school like Russian roulette if you're gonna have a ceiling that day. And that's difficult for us. We do our best to educate our kids, but to walk in a classroom and over a weekend and see your ceiling on the floor, I've experienced that myself this school year. It's very difficult for us. And I don't think that is something that our kids should have a routine to know how to do, how to switch classes and how to make sure things are done. That, to me, should not be a, not even a school issue. I know we based a lot of our building issues on a survey or a study that was done six years ago, but with an aging building such as ours, that may not be what we need currently. Currently, we have three staff members who are displaced due to flooding and ceilings falling. And I'm not sure if it's being conveyed to the Board, or however, we've been fortunate enough for these ceilings to fall over the weekend or at night, but when are we gonna, but what happens when it falls during the day? What happens when our kids are in the classroom and it falls? And I know we have a huge deal with Surf Pro because they took their equipment from one classroom, and now it's in the nurse's office. Our nurses displaced, our reading recoveries, teachers are displaced, and daily we just wonder, who's next? Because I know currently there are about ten classrooms that have experienced that this year. And I don't think that is something that our kids should have to experience. Again, I wanna say thank you for the work that has been done, the painting, the doors, but a ceiling falling is major to us, and we would like for it to be addressed soon. All right, thank you.
Without objection, the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting minutes, the April tenth, twenty-twenty-five special call board meeting minutes, and the April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five budget work session special call board meeting minutes will be approved.
Objection. I have an objection on the March twenty-fourth board meeting minutes. It is on page four, section B, policy four, I guess, number four there, where it states that Mrs. Berger did not vote. I did vote, I did vote in assent, and I watched the video twice just to make sure. And I wanna propose possibly that there be a hand raise, a motion vote, because I know you sitting where you are, it can't always see and can't always hear. So if that's something that we can take under consideration, it would help Julie, I think.
Did everybody hear Ms. Berger's suggestion? I think that's a very good idea, we'll just raise hands.
Yep. All right. So now I propose to, with that change, to accept the minutes.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we move to action items with Dr. Ware.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Presley, I have several policies tonight. Policy KA, school-parent-community relations, has been updated to reflect the language in that first bullet to say the public school system belongs to the people who created them by consent and support them by taxation.
We have a motion to accept policy KA for first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next policy I have is policy AC, nondiscrimination, and the email addresses have been updated in that second reading on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
The discussion, little discussion.
Any discussion?
About the emails, if we're gonna put emails in there, they're gonna have to be updated every time there's a personnel change.
They are, but I think it's required to put the person's contact info.
Okay.
We're just gonna remember, after number to, like you said, every time there's a change, change the email. All those in favor of the second reading of policy AC?
Aye. All right, policy BEDH, public participation at meetings, has been updated on that last paragraph to say the Board may ask clarifying questions, provide factual information, or recite existing policy in response to inquiries, but the Board will not openly discuss, deliberate, or decide matters regarding any subject not included on the agenda.
I have a question. Mr. Gray asked for the wording, the first part of that, to Board, the Board may ask clarifying questions. There was nothing discussed about openly discuss. They seem to cancel one another out, and might I ask who added that wording and why was that added?
Could you repeat that?
At the last meeting, Mr. Gray asked to have added, the Board may ask clarifying questions, Mr. Cannon referred to that. That was all he proposed from the last meeting. But there's another red section that's in there which says, but the Board will not openly discuss.
It was just an attempt to clarify the questioning for any participants that sign up for public participation. You can ask questions, but you're not gonna openly discuss.
And even when Mr. Gray made his recommendation, we had some conversation about that, and he said it's not to provide any information, it's just to ask clarifying questions. So we just wanted to make certain that the policy was spelled out to reflect what was being requested.
What we're saying here is just that we might ask a clarifying question, but we're not gonna go into a detailed conversation at that point on the agenda on something that isn't on the agenda.
Correct. Well...
That was how I took it, too. We were not gonna start a discussion at that point with the person speaking at public forum.
I think it's well worded, if they're willing to give their time to come address the Board, and we have a question, might well be able to ask it and get that information and move on. We don't have to make any decision.
When we ask clarifying questions, comma, we're allowed to provide factual information or recite existing policy in response to inquiries. That seems to be a discussion, or not. I mean, and so... I'm good with ask clarifying questions, which is what he did discuss last time, but not necessarily with the openly discuss. Because if we're asking clarifying questions, the person who has addressed us is able to respond, I would presume.
I guess put it to a vote and see if we like it like it is, or we should change it again.
Well, I have one other comment.
All right, okay.
Because we are allowed to provide factual information or recite existing policy in response to inquiries, I wondered if we could add language toward the top that allows us to be made, allows the entire Board to be made aware of who's speaking and what the topic is going to be when someone signs up for public forum. Since we can provide factual information or recite existing policy, it would behoove us to know what the topic is.
I mean, I don't see why we couldn't do that, yeah. I mean, they have until 3:00 PM on the day to sign up, so you'd be getting that information.
So does that need to be...
Sometimes after three o'clock.
So does that need to be codified because I had a sentence that we could add to that?
She said, does that need to be in the policy, that all Board members would be notified the afternoon of a board meeting as to who had signed up to speak at public forum?
I think it's important, but if it's not, that actually aggravates the discussion part of it. If some Board member sees something coming up, and they get ammunition or get information, they wanna go back and forth. We've never done that in public discussion. We're listening to the public, that's what we're supposed to do.
And it's public participation. In many cases, that is the very first time we may be hearing that concern. So we may not have the factual information to provide, depending on what time the person signed up to speak. If they signed up on the exact same day, we may not have time to pull all the information together, and then we don't know specifically what information to pull before the meeting because we hadn't heard the concerns.
Ms., I'll pass this one down, let you see it, and honestly, what they put usually for topic, sometimes you're not quite sure exactly what that is, you wouldn't really know how to pull, I don't think.
Well, there's a question here, reciting existing policy so that we are prepared with the policy. So should that even be in there, then? If we're not able to state it back to the...
Well, that's kinda where I was going, was just to delete that phrase. The Board may ask clarifying questions, but the Board will not openly discuss, deliberate, or decide matters regarding any subject.
Right, just delete, provide factual information, or recite existing policy.
Right, because, you know, just a little bit later there, we talk about we won't openly discuss, and I kinda feel like that's a contradiction, at least a little bit.
Well, that's my point. The openly discuss was added not because of your comment last time, and this policy has been in place since nineteen seventy-six, that we would provide factual information. One of the things that I hear, that I heard Mr. Cannon mention, as well as a woman who spoke a few months ago, because we cannot ask clarifying questions, or, you know, even show that we are actively... because we cannot ask clarifying questions, or, you know, even show that we are actively listening, so to speak, and we might have factual information or recite existing policy, the public does not feel like they're hearing back from us at all because there is not one of us designated as a responsible party to get back to people. Since this, the part that has been accepted since 1975 has been in here, I do not want to simply strike that at this point in time. So maybe this has to be discussed again?
We can just vote on it.
Well, we voted up and down, Madam Chair.
Okay, that's, all right. All right, then do I have a motion to approve Policy BEDH for second reading?
I shall move.
Do we have a second?
Let's table it.
Okay, yeah. So we will table BEDH, and we will collectively as a board do some thinking about that last paragraph and how maybe we could make sure the wording is in no way able to be misinterpreted.
All right, I have one more. Policy DIEA, Anti-Fraud, has been updated to include the address of the district office.
Do we have a motion to accept Policy DIEA for second reading?
Madam Chair, I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, yes, discussion. I'm sorry, Mr. Gray, I want to check your...
This is basically whistleblower, isn't it? This is a whistleblower policy, right? Is it not? Or at least part of it?
Part of it.
Yeah.
I think it would be good to include that term. No person will suffer any penalty, this is on the second page, just about the prevention, control, and detection methods. That's basically protection for whistleblowers, so I just think including the term might, may allow people to better understand the intention of the policy.
Mr. Gray, do you have, are you recommending a specific place that you want that, that term included?
Down here.
Maybe just no person, and in parentheses, whistleblower, close parentheses. Or a sentence that says, persons reporting in good faith will receive protections generally afforded to whistleblowers, and then go into the rest of the paragraph.
I think the in parentheses after no person, in parentheses whistleblower, or in italic, something like that would be understandable.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, the rest of it, to me, is pretty self-explanatory. So just put no person, and then in parentheses whistleblower.
So Dr. Weir, does that have to come back as a second reading next time? Or because it's just a little tiny thing, we can approve it now?
It's up to the board.
I think it can be approved as second reading.
We have, I know in the past, when it was just a little...
Just that one change.
That's that, why not, yeah.
Non-substantive.
That's it, right there, just that, why, that's no person, right. All right, so all those in favor of Policy DIEA with Mr. Gray's suggestion of adding the whistleblower?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Carey. Strategic plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Presley. It is the time of year for us to submit our annual update for our strategic plan. And so you have a copy of that in your packet, and at this point in time, I will answer any questions that you have regarding the plan.
These are just updates, right? We're not looking at changing any performance goals or action plan steps?
We did change some performance goals and action plan steps, yes. If you look, and there is new staff at the State Department of Education, and they, they had all of the strategic plan coordinators come for training a couple of months ago, and they did a really fantastic job in giving us a lot of information, sharing what their expectations are, and wanting the plans to be not something that is dusty on the shelf, but something that is a living document that is constantly changing based on the data that we have. And so you will see, and I'll give you an example, if you turn to Performance Goal, our Student Achievement Goal, so if you turn to, and your pages aren't numbered, which I apologize, but if you go to that first Student Achievement Goal where it talks about the end of course testing, and it's several pages in, maybe five or six pages in, you will see for Algebra I and English II, you will see some data from our original goal, and then you will see for 25, 26, 26, 27, and 27, 28, you will see Executive Summary. What the State Department advised us to do, because somebody very smart one time said, if everything is important, nothing is. They said to really look at your areas of need, where you're performing well, you don't necessarily need a goal in that area, where you have some struggles, and where you're, you're not meeting the mark consistently, your areas of concern, that's where you need to focus. So if you will look, you will see Algebra I and English II, we discontinued those goals this year based on the data that we have because those, in those areas, we are doing much better. Biology I and U.S. History continue to be areas of concern for us, so we want to put our focus there. Another example, and we did these primarily with our academic achievement goals, but if you flip a few pages beyond that, you'll see I-Ready, Reading, and Math Goals, and you'll see new goals there as well, that is a new goal. And it is based on grade five, because when we analyzed our data, fifth grade was an area that we are missing the mark and we're concerned about. So we want to put our emphasis in that area, and you will see the targets there as well. There were some changes with some of the goals, with some of the action steps as well, not anything major. One example I can give you is we added a goal for our special, or we did add a goal for our special education students in reading, but we added an action step in there to support that along with supporting our multilingual learners with curriculum. So there have been some changes, Mr. Gray, nothing big or sweeping, but we did tailor our performance goals, particularly our academic achievement ones, to really focus on our areas that we have identified that we have concern about.
Dr. Carey, on that first page that you were talking about, go back to that Performance Goal for Algebra I, English II, Biology, and U.S. History?
Yes.
Page. The U.S. History I, the 20, was the 24, 25, the projected goal was 39.8, but we only met at 34.2?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes. And this is based on, on our most recent testing cycle from 23, 24.
And on the very cover page, the Executive Summary Needs Assessment.
Yes.
You start out with the Letters Program and supported by Literacy Coaches at every school. We did not continue a district goal for grades K to 2. Will you be letting us know, because you said that it showed some sort of improvement? Are we able to get those numbers? Or when will we get those numbers?
I could put that, I can give you that information, I don't have it, of course, with me tonight, but we would, we pull that information from I-Ready. We look at I-Ready scores for each grade level K through 8, and that is what informed that decision. We are doing very well with our K through 2 students.
Okay, so, and then it says allowing the shift to focus to grades 3 through 8. And because we have to retain students who don't meet a certain criteria for going into fourth grade, it seems that third and fourth grade are skipped, and their focus is now on fifth. Is there something going to be looked at for that third and fourth grade?
Well, again, when we analyzed I-Ready from third through fifth, fifth was the grade level where we had the most concern.
Which is relative, most concerned versus...
Fifth grade was not performing as well as third and fourth.
Okay, but our third and fourth, our thirds are where we might have to retain, be retaining students. So are they, so I guess maybe if I could get those, how they're performing as well?
What would you like, would you like winter I-Ready scores?
Yeah, winter would be fine.
Okay. Sure.
I also had a question about gifted and talented, item six on the back of the first page, with the students in third grade who attained stretch growth in math, instructional units that integrate I-Ready math resources. So those children would be taught by a GT teacher or classroom, and this is accelerated math for them with regular classroom teacher? How would that be done, Dr. Carey?
It's with a regular, following our current GT model.
Right.
I've got something stuck in my throat. Following our regular GT model that we've had in place for the last decade or so?
Right.
It would be a regular classroom teacher who has the GT endorsement.
Okay.
And it would be using the I-Ready tools for instruction, not the computer-based aspect of it, but they have, they have several different components. Tools for instruction is one of those that can be used to accelerate student learning.
So those students would be pulled out of regular classroom?
They would be in a group with other GT students.
Okay.
Not a pure pull-out, but they would be with a GT-endorsed teacher. Could be during the enrichment period where they're grouped together.
So do you do something similarly for the ELA, for the GT children?
Yes.
In that, okay.
Yes.
Dr. Carey, I've got one question, comment that might help Ms. Berger. With the fifth grade, the scores that we see here, are that, is that this year's current fifth graders? Or is that coming from last year's fifth graders? Do you know?
Let me flip to...
I'm looking at that page.
That page. The scores that you see would be, because it's a new goal, that would be from the winter I-Ready administration.
Which is this current class?
This current class, so this was from December of this school year. We had 45% who were meeting typical growth as measured by I-Ready. And what we would love to see in an ideal world for typical growth would be 100.
And Ms. Berger, this year...
I don't know how far back you are.
On the I-Ready scores, when you were asking about what happened to third and fourth grade, and she was saying fifth grade was having the most difficulty or showing the least. This year's fifth grade class are our COVID children. They missed the last nine weeks of kindergarten. Their first grade was hybrid, so they were only in the building two days a week. Second grade, we still had extended 14 days of quarantine, because I have a fifth grader in my home.
You're living it.
So I am living it, so to me, that's part of why this group, we see the...
Right, and I don't want anyone to think none of the other grade levels are important, but it is important that we have a focus, instead of having a shotgun approach where we try to fix everything. That's not to say that there isn't, there aren't things happening for all of these other grade levels. There certainly is, but when we look at our plan and we want to look at where our emphasis should be, that is how we came to these decisions, and it's different. All of our schools went through this process as well, and if you've been doing this, you know, back when I was a principal, we had a goal for every EOC class, we had a goal for graduation rate, we had a goal for, oh, wow, HSAF, we had a goal for everything. But that isn't always the best approach, and it was freeing for the State Department to say, where do you really, after you've looked at your needs analysis, after you've really summarized that, where do you really want to focus and put more of your energy? Again, everything is still important, and we're not saying, well, we're not going to worry about third grade, but this is, this is why we made the decision we did. We're looking for the areas that need the most attention. And that could change next year, I may come to you next year, and the emphasis could be fourth grade, it could be second grade, so just know that it is ever-changing.
Are the numbers on that perform...
And I just wanted to add one more thing to what Dr. Carey said. Just because the goal is not in the strategic plan, it does not mean that we are not doing something to address other areas. The ones that are in the strategic plan are the goals that we are saying are going to be the, that's going to give us the greatest gains, that's going to give us the most significant improvement in our academic success with students. But we still address other goals, other instructional goals, in other areas. So just because it's not in the strategic plan, doesn't mean we're not addressing it.
Thank you for the clarification. On that page with the fifth grade scores, are those percentages? The average baseline is that 45% of the students?
Met typical growth, yes.
Met, not approached, but met or exceeded. So I-Ready math, three years from now, we're only hoping that 40% make it?
Well, when you, when you talk with folks about data and research, they say, start with around five percentage points when you're looking at gains from year to year. It may sound, not sound like a lot, but, but it can be a lot, it can be a lofty goal. And sometimes we deviate from that, sometimes we say, you know, this, this class is really struggling, they have a lot of gaps here, we might, might want to do three points. We may say we want to do seven, it just, it depends on the student, it depends on the data, but as a rule, we, we shoot for five, and we adjust these targets every year. You know, I would love to come, come back next year and have data that shows that, you know, we got to the 55% mark, and now we've had to adjust these other targets. So then we're going to be looking at, you know, moving out to 70 and 75 by 2028. We always make those adjustments, they're not set in stone.
So our baseline is what we met this year?
Yes.
Okay, what were our goals last year and the year before for making this year?
We didn't have this goal last year, this is a new goal.
Okay. So there was nowhere where we have it written down or projected, how our fifth graders would do over time?
We had it, it was a different type of goal, it wasn't specifically for fifth grade. We had I-Ready goals for each grade level, and they were, they were listed out in each row. So we did not keep that goal, we decided that fifth grade was the grade that we would target, and we don't have that goal anymore, which is why you see the C Executive Summary, where we explained that we deleted that goal and created this new one, which we have the flexibility to do.
I like to see the fact that you are focusing on the greatest need, I think that's a plus.
I had a question about Performance Goal Area Gifted and Talented, Artistic. In the action steps, everything seems to be indirectly focused on students, and because the, the Performance Goal is to increase the number of students participating. So do we do anything, are we planning to do anything directly to the student to encourage student participation?
With GT Artistic, it's, it's a little different animal than it is with Academic. With Academic, they're clearly identified using, you know, the testing system in second grade. With Artistic, it's much different, it may be a student tries out for something, it may be a club after school, it's not, it's not the same as it is with Academic. So providing opportunities is how we meet those students' needs with that art. There's not a hard and fast test or assessment that says you're GT Artistic. It's more about providing those opportunities and letting them identify through that means, by having those opportunities to showcase their talents.
Moving on to Performance Goal Area School Climate, the first action step talks about mentoring programs, and I've had folks in the community talk to me about mentoring programs, especially a speakers bureau connected to NA, to NASS. Can we do that, is that something that...
Sure.
So can, if we were to develop a speakers bureau, would we have a coordinator, somebody to manage these, this mentoring program? Who's going to do the management of that mentoring program you mentioned there?
Well, I feel sure Mr. Earl would have someone in Student Services be willing to take that on, and I can have some discussion with him after this meeting about that.
And if you're, Mr. Gray, are you speaking specifically about that one location? And if you're, Mr. Gray, are you speaking specifically about that one location?
I was there, yes.
And we would definitely include the building level principals.
Right. Because that might be something that other schools want to take advantage of as well.
Dr. Carey, on the performance goal, teacher administrator quality, it's like two pages from the end. That one's easier to find. When it says overall turnover rate, is that teachers leaving the district?
Yes.
Okay. And the percentage of minority personnel hired, is that empty at the end because it's going to be, it's, it's not going to be done, or why is that empty at the end, at the bottom line?
Well, because that's, that bottom line is for actual data, and we don't have actual data for future years. We only have it for twenty-four, twenty-five, and earlier.
You know what? Smack my head, read it wrong.
I know it's a lot of reading.
It's a lot of data, and thank you for putting it together, because my head was spinning looking at it.
Um, Dr. Carey, I want to say thank you, because anyone who could, can deal with percentages and performance goals the way you do is just awesome. I always believe in data, because that tells the story of what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize my team, because they, they do all the, the work behind the scenes that make me look good up here. So kudos to them back there.
Okay, team, good job.
But thank you.
This is an action item. Do we have a motion to approve the district strategic plan?
I so moved that we...
Aye.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rawls.
The wellness policy. We seeking some clarification in the wellness policy that was read for its first reading at the last meeting, so I'm asking that we put a hold on that until I can get some more information from the State Department in regards to the wellness policy.
May I ask, who is the board member on the Wellness Committee?
Um, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Does anybody know that they're on this committee?
I know that I am not, if that helps.
I'm not sure. We, we had a meeting in January that several folks were unable to make, but I can get that, I can get your committee, a list of committee members.
And I think I was supposed to be on that, that's when my mother was in the hospital I see.
And it may be, it may be, I knew there was, there were some issues with a few people that couldn't be there that day.
Mr. Rawls, make certain that we get the last meeting agenda in the minutes, and we can share that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Then I'll move on to fund balance request, unless you've got another question.
I was going to say, do we need to make a vote on, that's what I thought, we don't have the info, we got to hold. Okay. I, yeah, fund balance request.
And then it is the recommendation of the administration to request six hundred thousand from the district, six hundred thousand dollars from the district's fund balance for painting improvements to the interior and exterior of Little Mountain Elementary School, to install security fencing at Newberry Elementary School and Mid-Carolina High School, and to purchase additional radios and cameras to improve communication and safety for our bus fleet.
Is it possible to break down what money's going for which of those?
You, you have that from the budget work section.
Last time, okay.
It's the very last page with all the fund balance.
Okay.
So that, that's everything that's on that, minus the four hundred and fifty thousand in the...
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah. So is it even six hundred thousand?
Where does the fund, fund balance stand now? So that's about thirty-three percent of the budget. Twenty-five million out of seventy-five million is about a third, so that's...
That's right, yeah, just rounding off, that's correct. We have a motion to approve the administration's request for six hundred thousand from our fund balance to cover painting improvements, fencing, and radios and cameras for the bus fleet.
I so move to accept that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now we come to policy KBB. Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Here. You need to, yeah, his mic's not working.
Yes, on call, policy KBB, parents' rights and responsibilities. We spoke about the calendar days and designating the parent conference days. We met with our principals and leadership, and we've come up with a solution to that. The schools will communicate their parent conference days with their parents and when they will be held. But they will have designated days at some schools, and then you will have other schools where what they did this year, it worked extremely well, and they said that they had more parent conferences than they've had in previous years. So we have allowed the schools that want to set their parent conference days, to set those dates before the school year starts and communicate those days. And the KBB, the PTO meeting dates will also be communicated in the same fashion, and we had a conversation with the principals about making certain that they are aware of other district scheduled events, when they're scheduling these dates and times for parent-teacher conferences as well as PTO meetings. So at this time, we're not recommending any changes to those policies.
May I ask a question? The back bullets, fifth one down, it says, one of the parents' responsibilities is to ensure attendance and punctuality. Does that fall under, Mr. Rawls, do, do we have some way to reach out to parents about that? Is there, are there workshops for that, or how do we urge parents to make sure their kids are in school?
We, we communicate the attendance expectations from the school level. When we were really making certain that we were adhering to the ten-day, and nothing going past those ten days, and that we had to provide clarification, that those ten days included, excused and unexcused absences. And so at that point, the district communicated that information repeatedly during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, starting in December throughout the end of the school year. We also sent another communication this year about midway through the year. I think we looked at the attendance notifications, I'm not sure if we sent it out district-wide or whether the schools sent that out. District? Right. So we will communicate with parents, and then if there is an attendance issue, every school has their attendance, you know, committees. So they're communicating when students reach that certain threshold of absences or tardies, and they are notifying parents as well. And then if there's still not improvement, then it's escalated to Mr. Earl's office, and his case managers are getting involved, and they're working through our court system and making certain that if the student is required to be attending schools, that we are notifying and doing everything that we can do to make certain that that parent is aware, and they're aware of the resources that we can offer as well.
Thank you. Is there a certain number of days that parents are made aware that if a student misses twenty-five percent of school or whatever high numbers, that they are not going to be promoted to the next grade?
Ten.
Ten, that's it, ten.
Ten days. If they go past, if they go over ten days, they have to make a seat time.
Okay.
Or, and that's for our high school, middle school earning Carnegie units towards graduation. With elementary and middle, they have a little more flexibility to offer make-up work, make-up time for, for those students.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming in the past, Ms. Berger, parents get a letter once, if you had so many unexcused absences at least, you would get that letter. Nothing else that would remind you, uh-oh, I forgot to get that doctor's excuse, or I forgot to turn it in, and you clear up your paperwork sometimes, but they keep parents informed in that manner, is the way.
And also, Ms. Berger, if a kid misses three consecutive days, that alerts us. If they miss five cumulative days, that alerts us. So parents will begin to be notified, and as soon as that notification's made, most parents will let us know, whether it was a doctor's excuse, a parent note, or whatever, and sometimes they will come to the school at that point to submit that. Otherwise, if it's another situation in the school attendance, they would have to deal with that parent, making certain that they're aware and that this can't continue, or these are the...
Thank you.
So these are just for discussion, but is everybody okay with leaving them basically as they are?
Is what Mr. Presley, the recommendation is out there? Make the motion, we accept it. Did we do that already?
Well, these, this wasn't an action item, but it's, we're just discussion, but, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they look fine to me, I was just...
I just wondered on KF. There's a bullet that talks about political party.
We're not on that one.
Not on that one yet.
Well, KBE and KBB.
Okay. Come on then, roll it.
Are we good to move on? I think so, okay. All right, now we get to, this month, we were continuing to look at the K policies, we have policy KDD.
I don't think we did KBE. Excuse me.
Yeah, we did, we just talked, that's what we just talked about. Mr. Presley just talked about that one.
PTO meeting.
PTO.
Okay.
All right, KDD, KDDA, KE, KEC, and KF. In the past, instead of us like last month pulling each one, we're going to ask this evening, if you see one, there was something that you noticed in one that you feel like we need to discuss for a possible change. Let me know right now, and we'll pull that one for discussion. Policy KE. KE, okay. Anybody else have one they want to pull?
KF.
KF? All right, we're pulling KE and KF. All right, Ms. Nets, Ms. Berger, would you like to go first with KE?
KE.
I, I had mentioned this once before, where it says KE, public concerns and complaints. I'd love to just change it to concerns to one or more board members against any action of an employee, and just remove the word complaint. I think they're somewhat interchangeable, but one's stronger and on the more negative side, and I don't think it weakens the policy to just use the word concern and, and makes it more like we're all on the same page. So I would change where it says, I would change it to concerns addressed to one or more board members against any action of an employee of the district, or against any administrative rule or board policy, which in the judgment of the board members' hearing, the concern requires investigation or action, will be referred to the superintendent, and then on the next, toward the end of the next paragraph, change that word complaint to concern also, that will register the concern in writing with the chairman of the board, setting forth the facts on which the concern is based. It's friendlier.
It is, but also it's, there can be a jargon-type definition of complaint that formalizes if it's called a complaint. So I like the idea of calling it a concern that comes to the board members, because I really don't think...
Concerns have remedies.
Well, complaints have expected responses too. And I don't know that if, I don't think it was, would be in the general way that we do business for the, for an individual board member to receive a formal complaint. It would be referred to the superintendent.
So are you saying leave it the way that it is?
No, I'm saying I agree with you.
Oh.
I like that.
So we're saying, basically take the entire policy like it's called, so KE, public concerns and complaints, just strike and complaints, correct?
Right.
Yes, and then reword.
Everywhere it says complaints.
Substitute for concern.
Right here, for purpose, public concerns.
But in the second paragraph...
Concerns to, right?
But it says, if the matter cannot be resolved satisfactorily by the superintendent, the complainant, I don't know how to change that word, the concerned person, I, I just see, you can leave that word complainant there.
Right, because if they've gone to the superintendent, then they're making a complaint.
Yes, yes, yes. So it's, it's one, two, three changes. I guess the bottom line too. We'll consider the concern.
Okay, we good? All right, Mr. Gray, I want some discussion on KF.
On KF, about halfway down, there's a bullet that talks about a political party using school facilities, and I wondered if we should, just for the purposes of clarity, restate the fact that election, ad, advocacy for an election cannot be done on school property, like having a sign in the back of your truck that says, vote one way or another, or vote for this person.
It's in another policy.
Okay, yeah, and I'm just saying, I know it's in another policy, but I'm just wondering, do we need to put it there too, just to make sure it's seen by the people that need to see it? But it's not a big deal if it's, if you don't, if you think the other policy handles it, then that's fine.
I think this is more use of the physical, the indoor physical facilities, this policy, and the other, it was sort of parking on the ground with a, with a sign.
This one's who can use it, and that one's how to use it.
And that one's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, got you.
So we're good, leave that one as is?
So no changes for KF. We'll come back first reading for policy KE.
KE, yes, sir.
And we'll have a draft for that for first reading at May 14.
Right, and the rest of them are just, we're not making any changes, that's correct. All right, and now we move to Dr. Weir with KDC, which I have now launched.
Yes, I know at the last board meeting, KDC was discussed. This policy was originally adopted in January of this year, and we are talking about only the official accounts of the schools in the district, with the principals responsible for their school website and social media, and we don't necessarily have somebody that constantly monitors it. And so therefore, that is why we moved to turn off comments, and we also need the policy in the event that we are unable to turn off comments when we post sometimes. For example, I posted it finding Nemo, I could not get it to load because of all the people in a small area, to where comments could be disabled on our posting. So that's why we need the policy to stay in place as it is, in the event that comments are not disabled. Again, this is a brand-new policy that we did adopt in January.
So are you asking us, I mean, are we... So, are you asking us, I mean, are we going back on what was in January, or?
There was discussion.
So, just leaving it as?
We're asking to leave it as is with comments turned off.
Correct.
Okay. Where does that say that here?
It doesn't.
Okay.
But it does say if there are social media posts, then if a comment violates the policy, then we have the right to remove it because it violates the policy.
I'm not sure I'm understanding, because at last month, we discussed that there were comments, there were comments through February, I guess. And then, well, maybe last year, toward the end of the year, you mentioned at one of the board meetings, I don't remember if I was on the board yet or not, that you turned off the district-wide ones. But for, like, I went to the archery competition, I went to a whole bunch of the basketball games, and I, you know, mentioned comments to the coaches. When I see a student get awarded for something, I was, you know, commenting on it, hey, great job, and whatnot. And I think it shows the community's interest in what our students are getting kudos for. And then, all of a sudden, schools, one by one, were starting to pull the comments section, which I, which did go against our policy, because our policy does say that comments are allowed. So, I'd love to know from the people that are posting, because sometimes it's a teacher who posts something, a picture of student of the month, or something along those lines. And I'd like to know if the community supports having comments off, or whether it's a way that we can support our students in letting them know that we care, that we're supportive of them, that they're being noticed, because, you know, this could be the first time their name is out there on something, and they see people have commented on it in a positive way, hey, way to go, or something along that line. So, I don't read that this policy takes away the ability to comment on a Facebook post I'm talking about, because that's the way a lot of the schools do it.
Me, myself personally, I don't think on any of our Facebook posts, whether it's district, school, I don't think we need to be having comments. That's just my personal belief. I feel like the posts are out there for information, so parents can see. A lot of times, I know, the schools that I'm dealing with, you see the upcoming event, you know what's happening, like, you know, there's spring fleeing coming up Friday night. And so, everything like that gets posted. If you want to comment as a community member, everybody's emails are on there. You can email the coach, you can email the principal, you know, you can send it, you know, please let students, so whatever. I just, I mean, I'm not into Facebook in my personal life, so I'm just like, I don't think our school district, in my opinion, needs to be so into. And unfortunately, in today's day and age, you never know what someone might put. That could be very inappropriate, and like you said, who's checking it every day or whatever? And then something sits out there, and then somebody else sees this, and our phones start ringing. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's just my, if we need to make sure it's stated in the policy that there's, you know, that our, me, is for information only, it's not for.
So, you're saying for the individual schools too, not just the district site for all of them?
That's, that would be my thoughts.
People can still share and like, or love, or whatever it is, they can still click that they have seen it and like it. They can share it to their personal site. If it's a picture of their child, then they can share, hey, the district posted this of my child, and then people can comment on theirs, but not comment on what the district or the school has posted.
Okay, so, right now, that, we can comment on schools, that's correct, but not district? So, can't comment on either?
We used to be able to.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I agree with Ms. Metz on this one, you know, just because when I worked with recreation, when you leave it open every time somebody is, you know, I mean, you have people that make the positive comments, but then when somebody's disgruntled, it gets put on there, you know? And this day and age, there seems to be a lot of that. And, I mean, I don't do Facebook either, but you can, if you like something, you can take it and share it to your page, you know, which everybody does anyway, and even all the negative stuff, they end up sharing it on their own pages. But, you know, I like the idea of it just being put out there for information and leaving our pages, you know, for that, and then just letting individuals share and comment how they want to on their own individual pages.
I'm fine with that as long as that's what the consensus is, but then this whole policy needs to be changed, because this policy discusses, the district reserves the right to remove comments that contain boom, 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 boom. So, this whole policy needs to be rewritten, or all this messages about removing comments that contain and that the superintendent is the final judge on things, it's all got to come off. Because this indicates that you can make comments.
Well, in the event that we could not turn comments off, because I just gave you the example from Finding Nemo, I was not able to get it to load to turn the comments off. So, there were several until I could get to proper internet service to turn off. But I wanted people to know what the stage looked like, what was going on in that moment.
Dr. Weir, can, you know, and again, I don't understand enough of it, and I don't know whether it's changed, but whenever I had turned off the comment, I was able to turn it on, like with the county rec page, to where every comment got, you know, came to me first before, you know, I could release it or not. And, so, I don't know, do they still do that?
I don't think so.
Or you just cut it out completely?
They'll.
So, it doesn't work that way?
No. I've asked my smart, the smart guys in technology.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know, because I'm, I am not tech savvy in that regard, and I don't know exactly how.
Even if it did, though, we still run into the issue of who would it go to?
He says on Facebook, you can turn it off and on?
He said, yes, for Facebook.
Yeah.
No for YouTube. I say just leave it like it is. Sounds good to me.
I'm sad. No, it wasn't action, it was a discussion. All right, and now we're back to Dr. Weir. I mean, not Dr. Weir, Dr. Carey, I'm sorry, Dr. Carey. Just getting past my bit.
Good evening again. It is time for us to begin to think about who will be on our district library advisory committee, and, I'm skipping ahead. Skipping the calendar?
Calendar.
All right. Is that a Freudian skip? Poor attempt at humor there. All right, so, in your packet, you will see draft A, which is the draft that we brought last, last month for discussion. And then, based on the feedback we received from you, we crafted a draft B, and that is included in your packet as well. And now, we'll turn the discussion over to you.
Dr. Carey, I would, and thank you for being able to produce the second one, and that does have a lot more of the dates. And I know that last year, Mr. Bledsoe had asked for us to look at the Greenville County calendars, and that we sort of adopted that. And so, you know, I would ask tonight that maybe, you know, to go back, and because there were some things in there, and I don't have a printer, so I couldn't print it off. But, and it's very similar to the B, there's just a couple little things there that maybe just looking at it and seeing if that's something that we can incorporate.
Okay.
Ms. Lake actually sent me the link to it, and I happened to look at it this afternoon too, Dr. Carey. And what I liked about it is they're starting, their teachers coming back, they don't actually come back to August 4th, and then they're getting out at the end of May. And they're able to have the two weeks at Christmas, and they're able to have a day, you know, give the teachers a day in October. So, I don't know if it would be worth, I think, you looking at, or all of us looking at, just to see how they did it. Because it looked like they had the ninety days and the ninety days, and, you know, because you've got certain things, you've got to have your ten teacher professional development days and all those things in there, so.
Well, along the lines of having a day in October, everybody take a very deep breath, and let it out slowly, because some heads might explode when I say this. Could it be something that might be considered, thinking about, moving the Wednesday before Thanksgiving to October as a day off?
It doesn't interrupt the ninety days, it allows us to have the ninety days in.
Just, you know, I hear a lot about teachers wanting a day off in every month, and I understand that, so I was just thinking that might be a way, but I didn't know if, I didn't know how sacred that Wednesday was before Thanksgiving.
As in, come to school on the 25th? Is that what you're saying? Oh, no.
What?
I say, no, you don't do the cooking.
Oh, no.
Wait a minute now.
You pulled that day from somewhere else.
Oh, Mr. Gray.
Is it a mandated day off?
Well, I said they would.
Election Day, because this is a non-year. Is that a state mandated day off? Okay.
Every other year.
Okay.
Yes, we have to do that.
Every other year?
Yep.
So, didn't we have it off last, oh, oh, 26, sorry.
So, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
It rotates on us.
Which, I just, I want to say this, because this was in a lot of the feedback that we received from teachers. When we have, for instance, this coming school year, we don't have Election Day. So, we were able to do a longer break for Thanksgiving. They really liked that, and I agree. When they saw this, they said, oh, you took that away, we want that longer break back. But because we have to have that Election Day, that gives us less flexibility. Unless, of course, we start in July, start earlier, then we can have more of that. But I just want to say that publicly, because I think some teachers thought we just said, oh, you get four days off, and now we're taking it away. It's all based on Election Day and having those ninety days in that first semester before the Christmas holidays, which, unless you're a high school person, you don't normally think about that.
I just wanted to tell you, I thought you did a good job with this. I know somebody said something about starting in July, and I wondered, the teachers I talked to said it didn't really matter that much to them, but you've given us two options here. You can start in July, or you can start three days later and make all that up. And I thought that looked good. And of course, everybody did talk about going from a week at Thanksgiving to three days, but you got to give somewhere. We asked you to start as close to August as we could and to finish by May, and I thought you did that too. I wondered, I knew that Mr. Presley at one point had said y'all got some feedback from teachers that were actually some comments. Did they have any strong feeling one way or another about starting two or three days in July, or waiting in August to do everything?
Not necessarily. One thing that they do like, they do not like a Monday start. That is exhausting, not necessarily for them, but for the students, and to have students, particularly little ones, start on a Monday. We do get feedback every year that that is not, that is not their preference. So, they do, they do favor a midweek start, but in order to get the ninety days in with B, we had to do a Monday start. We still continue to get, you know, questions about, can we look at, you know, a modified option? They see other districts doing that, you know? And a hundred eighty days is a hundred eighty days, so even if they start in July, they're not coming any, anymore, they're just maybe going longer, but with breaks. So, you have to pick your poison. Do you want to compress it and get it done in a short amount, a shorter amount of time, or do you want to stretch it out a little bit and give them those mental health breaks to hopefully help with attendance and subs and that kind of thing, too? It's a delicate balance.
They just want us to forgive extra days and not worry about it.
And Dr. Carey, the Greenville one has a midweek start, so it doesn't start on that Monday. And like I said, it's really close, but just the way that they did it. So, that's why, you know, I'm thinking it may, because I know last year that that helped us a lot, so, you know, to maybe look at that.
Let me ask you also, December 21st. So, I know the kids are not coming, but do teachers have to come on the 21st?
Yeah, that's what it, what it would look like, yes, yes.
So, yeah, can we fix that one?
That's what I was saying, Greenville doesn't do that either. That was, I was like, oh, no.
Me personally, I would take a personal day on the 21st.
A lot of people calling sick.
And Dr. Carey, the orange dates, are, are teachers not in on that day?
They are not. Those are makeup days in case we have a weather event, and those would be an e-learning day. So, the teachers would not work those days unless it became an e-learning day due to weather. Our 240-day employees, which would be our district staff, our principals, you know, some of our classified staff at the school level, they would, they would work those days. That would be a normal work day for them.
Do you think that one calendar over another favors implement weather days or makeup days, since one's a day late in each shoe?
A has one in the fall, which, you know, I wouldn't have said this five years ago, but, you know, we're having more fall, winter, or fall implement weather than we do winter anymore. So, I, the one thing I like about, about A is that it does have at least one of those days built in, in the fall, which we just don't have the flexibility with the ninety days to do it on B in the fall. Because if we could have, you know, you won't have it even split, because, you know, there's three of them, but if you could at least have one in one semester and two in another, it's a little more balanced.
And I'll point this, all the days that we had to make up were in first semester. And we made up two of those days in second semester. So, even though we made them up, those kids from first semester, high school kids, they're in a totally different class. So, we just, we had to work through that, but it's good to have them spread out and have some in first and some in second.
I like them both, but I also like Greenville County. I think they spend a lot of time on, I don't object to if we could get a copy of theirs and just compare them all.
Let, let us take a look at the Greenville calendar, and we'll bring back.
Sounds good.
Okay?
All right, moving on to the district library advisory committee. If you'll remember, when we presented policy KEC back in December, we talked about having a district library advisory committee. And again, this is not a, the group that reviews books. They just talk about library circulation, issues that our library media specialists are experiencing and things of that nature. So, there is one board member that would be designated to be a part of this committee, much like the wellness committee that Mr. Rawls was up here talking about earlier. So, I would like at this time to, to find out if any of you are willing or able, or would you like to appoint someone? I just need a representative from the board to be a part of that committee.
I thought, I thought at the last month's meeting that Ms. Berger was. Yes, we did.
I had her name written down, but we just needed to confirm.
Okay, I just thought I remembered somebody saying that.
Yeah. Ms. Berger, are you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Deborah's on wellness.
Thank you, and we expect that committee to be up and running in the early fall next year. We're working on finalizing the members now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and Ms. April Peel.
And as Ms. Peel comes down, I know at the last board meeting, we had some discussion about some of the murals that were painted over at Prosperity Riker. I reached out to Ms. Peel and wanted her to come and just kind of explain the process and the work that she put in when she was going through the repainting at Prosperity Riker. Ms. Peel, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Presley. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of Prosperity Riker Elementary regarding the murals and recent painting updates. As many of you are aware, I have had the privilege of being a part of the Prosperity Riker community since it first opened its doors in January 1997. This evening, I share with you the history of the murals that have evolved at PRE. Over the past 29 years, we have had the leadership of four different administrators, including myself, and have experienced numerous changes, each chapter contributing to the continued identity and growth of our school. When we first opened. When we first opened, the school did not have a mascot. We invited our students to share their ideas, and through their votes, we proudly chose the name Jets. And I actually had to look up, I really thought they won the Super Bowl that year, but it was the Green Bay Packers, so. At the time, our school embraced a space-themed decor, complete with remarkable solar system installation in the cafeteria and other thematic elements throughout the building. Later, we transitioned to a new mascot, the Pride of the Palmetto, represented by the Palmetto tree and a lion. Along with this change, murals were added to the school's plain walls to brighten the environment and reflect our evolving identity. A talented parent of a staff member generously painted sand dunes in the hallways, along with colorful underwater and Disney-themed scenes in our restrooms. The P T O supported these efforts financially, ensuring our school was filled with color and creativity. A few years later, with support from a former director of child nutrition, the cafeteria received another update featuring a New England meats jungle scene, complete with a lion. While these murals were beautiful and well-intended, over the years, they became significantly worn due to everyday use and wear. Over time, the themes did not align, and some images felt disconnected from our school's current mission and vision. After all, lions aren't typically found on South Carolina beaches. I don't know about you, but I've never seen them there. Six years ago, I was honored to become the principal of Prosperity Riker Elementary School, bringing with me fresh, a fresh perspect, excuse me, a fresh perspective and new ideas. In collaboration with our leadership team, which consists of one teacher per grade level, one academic arts teacher, one special education teacher, administration, guidance, and a reading coach, we made the decision to streamline our school's identity, simplifying our mascot to the Lions. Together, we updated our school logo, slogan, official colors, and overall branding to mo, to more accurately represent a cohesive and modern vision. In two thousand and twenty-four, we received long-awaited news that the school would be getting new flooring in the original classrooms and a fresh coat of paint throughout the building. My staff and I were thrilled as the updates were much needed. We were given the opportunity to choose the color scheme, and once again, I turned to our leadership team for input. We selected a palette of three hallway colors and a complementary shade for the classrooms, designed to create a welcome and unified atmosphere. After careful consideration of the mural's condition and thematic inconsistencies, we chose to paint over those to create a more unified and meaningful representation. This choice was not made lightly, but we believed it was the best course, course of action to ensure a professional and consistent look. We fully intend to introduce new murals in the future as funding becomes available. Following the recent comments made during the budget work session, I was deeply disappointed to hear our school described as resembling an institution. Such remarks were not uncalled, were not only uncalled for, but unprofessional, and they do not truly reflect the environment or values of our school. While I acknowledge concerns about visual appeal and tradition, it is crucial to emphasize that the feedback from our students, families, and staff has been extremely positive. The updated color scheme has instilled a renewed sense of pride and energy throughout our school. Finally, I request, should there be any concerns or questions about decisions being made at Prosperity Riker, the administration be contacted directly so we can address them together before they're shared publicly. Open communication is essential to the ongoing success and unity of our community. Additionally, I extend a formal invitation to all of you to visit our school and experience firsthand the great work happening, focusing on the incredible learning and growth taking place, not just the colors of the walls. Thank you for your continued support and for all you do to serve our students and schools. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lake, do you have anything for the legislative update this evening?
I've been, I'm kind of reading through my notes, since it's getting late. Again, got three pages of bills that are still there in there, so I'm just going to highlight a few. The full House gave third reading to House Bill thirty-two fifty-eight, which mandates school districts and charter schools under the direction of the South Carolina Department of Education acquire and implement mobile panic alert system in every school. These systems must integrate with local emergency response systems to improve coordination during school security incidents. Districts with existing systems are not required to purchase new ones. So, I'm not sure where we fall in that.
Mr. Presley, do you know, I mean, is, are we going to have to do them, or, or does that, are we, we there?
You said, security systems?
Yes.
We will have to upgrade.
We will have to upgrade, okay. I know that there have been some concerns with the School Board Association that has also been lobbying to find out, to see how much help, monetary help, that we're going to get. And so, they haven't, and I don't know Ms. Dowd, unless you know something different, they have not committed to any of the monetary means to help us out there. The Senate action, you know, reading or went over, it was sent to, it's the House Bill thirty-one ninety-six that was sent over. They looked over it, they made some changes. They sent it back to the House, and this bill modifies teacher certification requirements. It introduces a lifetime certificate for retired educators, revises teacher contracts and assignment procedures, increases the required number of intra-district professional development days from three to four, and mandates that the districts implement sick leave banks for school staff. The Senate amended the bill to incorporate ten-thousand-dollar fine per teacher for school districts that fail to provide written notification of contract reemployment decisions by May first. Teachers who do not receive a contract by May first are considered actually automatically renewed for the following school year. And I've got several more there, so I, I just tried to kind of highlight and pick out the ones that, you know, that will affect us directly. And so, if anybody is interested on the bills that are out there, if you will email me, I will be glad to send you all three pages.
Ms. Ger, Ms. Lake, I saw something last week about a bill, don't know if, don't remember if it was the House or the Senate that talked about assessments and how assessments are used in grading. Do you recall seeing anything about that?
Not in this week's updates.
Thank you, Ms. Lake. Ms. Dowd, our staff report by finance.
Madam Chair, Mr. Presley, and members of the board, you should have a copy of our cash summary report for the month of March in your board packet. We'll start with the prior month's balance of thirty-one-point-four million dollars. Deposits for the month totaled six-point-five million, and claims totaled six-point-eight million for an ending balance March thirty-first of thirty-one-point-two million dollars. The next page over on the back, we have a breakdown by fund, the general fund, twenty-six million dollars. Federal projects, three-point-four million. E I A funds, one-point-one million, and other state restricted funds, five-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. Again, thirty-one-point-two million dollars at the end of March. For the technology and construction funds, we had an ending balance in March of eight-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. The activity that we had there was five-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and that was for an H V A C unit replacement at Mid-Carolina Middle School. The following pages are our general fund revenue and expenditure reports, and I'll try to answer any questions you have at this time. Okay, we had legislative update on the agenda, but we really do not have any real new funding information right now to share. And we will hopefully have, have any new information at the March twelfth, I mean, excuse me, May the twelfth, next budget work session that we have. Okay? All right, thank you.
Mr. Rawls.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Presley, we'll start tonight with a brief report from the work orders of March twenty-five. As indicated on the graph on that first page, we had a total of nineteen new requests. A total of three-hundred-and-forty work orders were completed with an average of five days. Currently, we are tracking with, or as of four-twenty-two, we're tracking a hundred and four open work orders on an average age of thirty-six days. So, having a hundred and four work orders open right now is tremendous.
Mr. Rawls. In discussion with the gentleman who spoke earlier, how long does it take to replace a roof, a falling ceiling?
Uh, it just depends on the circumstance. If it's got to be dried out, it could be a couple of days.
So, they're out of their classrooms when this happens?
Sometimes, yes, ma'am.
More than a week?
I don't know if it's more than a week. It just depends on the circumstance, what, what flooring is there, if it's a hard floor, it's easy to clean. If it's carpet, we got to do a little more prep and drying, so.
How much water? Was it a sprinkler? Did a tree fall on the building? Because they had a tree fall on the outbuilding during the hurricane. So, there are a lot of different factors.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our H E S custodial update and performance. Report cards are tracking, you know, in the C-plus on the low end, we've had some improvements from the last couple of months worth of report cards. I think that's a, just a testament to our cleaners coming out of flu season and not having to miss a bunch of work because they're sick.
Mr. Rawls, I would disagree. I, I hate to do this every single month, but looking at, I looked, I pulled up last month. Our entrance and lobbies went from three-point-nine to three-point-one this month. Our hallways went from three-point-five to two-point-five. Our classrooms went from three-point-one to two-point-five. Our restrooms went from three-point-one to two-point-five. And our schools overall went from three-point-two to two-point-six-six. I don't know in what way that's an improvement.
Well, I'm looking at the management responses as being a three-point-five, which indicates to me that if he's notified of an issue, he is, he is making that right. It's, it's not a continued issue.
I don't remember what that, what that was last time, but the actual facilities, coupled with the comments on a lot of these, where it seems that there have been notebooks kept now with, I mean, if, if he's meeting these needs on a lickety-split basis, as you're, as you're highlighting the one area that maybe stayed the same versus the other five that went significantly down.
I don't think.
I can take that.
Yes.
I had a meeting with Barry, who oversees all the custodians.
Okay.
And he explained to me what those notebooks were about. Those notebooks are on the floor of the buildings where he has a lot of complaints. They're for minor issues that teachers may have. All the teachers were notified that those notebooks were placed there, and he goes and he checks those notebooks so that the teachers can write down if they have any concerns in their room. The score that he's getting for management responses is when the principal has an issue or the administrative team has an issue at that school, and they contact Barry, and then he responds to that. But the notebooks that you're referencing, those are for minor issues, so that the teachers can just go down there if their trash isn't being dumped on a regular basis, if their floors aren't being swept on a regular basis, so they can add it in that notebook. Because a lot of times, or sometimes, the teacher may not even let the administrative team know that something isn't happening. So, this is a way that he can give the teachers an opportunity to write down their concerns in a notebook so he can read it himself, and whoever the lead custodian is in that building, they reference those books as well. So, he explained that, that was his response to some of the things that were being done inconsistently, because he needs to know if the night crew, or the day crew, or whoever is supposed to be doing whatever the concern is, he needs to attack the problem at the root. And so, that is why he added those notebooks.
If you look, I noticed going along with what you said, Mr. Presley, on that back page at Boundary, and that's what I found very interesting to me. Room one-oh-four, rugs not vacuumed. Then room one-oh-nine, rug is vacuumed every day, thank you. So, we're talking the same building, and obviously, or then room one-twelve, thank you for vacuuming my rug daily. Then three-seventeen, dirty floors and carpets. So, he can see, he knows which employee is cleaning that room.
Correct.
Which employee is, got a, teacher's saying, my carpets are not vacuumed, it's dirty.
So, he had schools, and he went to the principal, and he said, if your teachers have a vacuum cleaner in their room, tell them to take it home, because they shouldn't be vacuuming their own classrooms. And so, he's tracking it down to the individual classroom to figure out who is not completing their assigned duties.
Right.
So, that's what he's doing. And he said he needs another manager to help him out.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I can see where, from his position, then you know who of your employees doing their job and who is getting away with as well as they can do.
So, it's, it's not every single classroom in the building. We just have to figure out where the reoccurring problems are. So, he, he's working along, and he's coming, and he's updating me and Mr. Rawls on the other bases.
So, how do you reconcile going from a three-point-five to a two-point-five in the hallways? Or, I, I think the notebook idea is a great idea for him, and, and, and I wish it had been employed a little bit earlier. But when I see just them all going down and down and down every month, school overall from three-point-two to two-point-six, he may rapidly be getting there, but it doesn't seem to have had an effect. And I feel like I'm beating a dead horse.
Ms. Berger, what helps me a little bit? I look school by school. Like, if you look hallways, it came down because Mid-Carolina High School and Boundary Street Elementary, those two brought it down. Those were the two, like, whoa, a one, a D. So, my, when I read it, and then I went across, I'm like, what in the world happened? Was somebody else sick? Did somebody quit? What happened at Mid-Carolina High School? What happened at Boundary? Does that make sense? When I look at it, I kind of like, ooh, what happened, something? I don't know, but, so it could, that's what I'm trying to say, is I'm not, I, I want them all to be four-point-os, would be perfect and fabulous, and that's everybody's goal. We want a hundred percent, let's be sparkling clean. I get it, I want in my room when I talk to be sparkling. But, you understand what I'm saying? It doesn't take but like one bad out there that brings the whole, brings the whole average down. We got a lot of folks working really hard, and a lot of buildings doing their jobs well, but then a couple over here mess it up for the whole, whole bunch.
Very good observation.
I think the notebooks, yeah, I'm like Ms. Berger, it'd be nice if we had done that sooner, because then he can really tell which employee, if that teacher's room is not right, or that end of that hall or that hall, but who's working that hall versus who's working that other hall. Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, we should have had it sooner, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Earl.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Presley, I have some information I'll be sharing with you in reference to school climate, student attendance, as well as a brief update as it relates to transportation. On your first page, in the information that you received from the Student Services Department, is the school-level truancy report, and that is dated as of April the twenty-first. If you look on the left-hand side, similar to the information that's normally presented, you have the name of the school in the far-left-hand column. The middle column is the number of students that were categorized as being truant on this day the report was ran. And then you also have the total enrollment for our school district, our total enrollment at the bottom, excluding pre-K students of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-one. And then you have a total of seven-hundred-and-fifteen students that were categorized as being truant during this timeframe. On your second page, is a school-level hearing officer recommendations and suspension report as of April twenty-first as well. Once again, far-left-hand side of the column is the name of the school. Second column has the number. has the number of students recommended to the hearing office, uh, up until this point in school year. And the last column states the number of incidents resulting in out-of-school suspension. Uh, that total number is nine hundred and two at the bottom, uh, for the total number of incidents, and the number of students recommended to the hearing office from each school. So far this year is one hundred and one. On your third page, similar breakdowns of information in terms of students being recommended in hearing office only, it is, uh, presented to you by each month. Um, you can look at those totals next to each month, and at the very bottom, once again, uh, one hundred and one is the total number of recommendations, um, but once again, this data is broken down by each month. And on your last page, that you have is K through twelve students that are enrolled at either Newbury Alternative School or Eden School Program for elementary students. Um, this is once again, as of April twenty-first. First column, your note, there's the names of each school and each level, uh, broken down by high, middle, and elementary. And then on the far right-hand side is the number of students that enrolled from each school, and that's a total right now of sixty-six, uh, they're enrolled as of April the twenty-first. And lastly, um, I did not have the document for this, but in terms of transportation, um, we did have eight cameras that were installed on our buses over spring break. Um, right now, that leaves us a total of two buses that are still without cameras, and all of our buses do have access to radios on them at this point in the twenty-first. So that is the brief, uh, update for transportation. Uh, eight cameras were installed over the break, that leaves us two without, and then all of our buses do have radios present on them. That is all the information I have from my department. Um, at this time, I'll try to field any questions you may have.
Um, Dr. Carey's report about truancy, I think there was something in there and how we're gonna try to minimize that, uh, across the board. Thirteen percent truancy is our average for the whole district, um, and that is brought up, lowered, I guess, it's, it's lowered because we have two percent at Whitmire, twelve percent at Mid-Carolina Middle School, and a, a few of them are very, Rubin has very good attendance. But Whitmire, Newbury, Goleman, and Newbury Middle School are all between twenty and twenty-six percent, um, truancy. I, I wonder if it might be, it might show a truer store, uh, report to have the percentages at the end of each. Cause this is just, this is for the month or for the year?
This is as of April twenty-first, so, um, two things to your point. Um, you may have some students that are categorized being truant, but they may turn into doctor's excuses, or some line, along, something along those lines, so they will come off the report. Um, in terms of getting the actual percentage, um, the reason I put the number of students was a hard number, and then you can look to the far right-hand, you get their enrollment. So if you do the math on that, um, that would give you not, anyone opportunity to want to see the percentage, but I have no problem adding that to the report as well.
Thank you. I, I just think it kinda shows where we need to target, um, schools that are really having the worst truancy problems.
And what we found out also, Ms. Berger, is some of, um, we're looking at how we're doing, uh, truancy in terms of addressing students and families. Cause we, through our hearing process, we've seen multiple households that may have two or three kids in a very similar situation. So we're looking at revamping how we have our case managers dressed in that, because we could be in a situation where one case manager dresses one household, and covers off through areas. So we're trying to maximize the best possible, having three case managers, and broken up to fifteen schools.
It's really hard for teachers to raise their test scores when those children don't come, and when you see such percentages, I had, like Ms. Berger had done with percentages, and when you see twenty-six point four percent, twenty percent, eighteen, I mean, that's hard. That, that's a lot of school they've missed, and for teachers to try to make it up, and then be held accountable for their test scores being high, it's, that's a tough situation.
And when we triangulate the data and you look at test scores, attendance, and discipline, cause I see a lot of the discipline comes through our district as well as the attendance piece, you.
I'm sure.
A lot of times you see some of the same students. Trying to, um, provide as much wraparound service as we can.
Yeah. And, and how are we trending, um, hearing office compared to last year? Did you ever look that up? I know we talked about that a, a couple of months ago. Are we pretty mu, is, is year to year pretty much the same? Are we getting better with the hearings?
Off the top of my head, year to year, it has gotten lower.
Okay.
Um, but what I want to do is in the month of June, when I report, I try to give a grab with all that information, um, for later. We should be right at about three years worth of data to conclude this school year, so we can really be able to start identifying some trends. Great action.
All right, thank you. All right, you want the mic?
Yes, I won't have to yell, okay. I apologize for talking so loud, I had a broken microphone, so now I won't have to talk as loud. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, those in the audits, and those that are viewing online, for my report, I would like to share some important dates and revisit some of our celebrations from this evening. Uh, you have, um, on the agenda, we will have our administrative retreat. Uh, we have, uh, established a three-day retreat with all principals, assistant principals, district-level leadership. Uh, those dates are June fifth, and July sixteenth and seventeenth. June fifth will be a wrap-up, end of the year, kinda looking at where we were successful, uh, and what we are hoping our successes will be when we get our data back during the summer and at the beginning of the school year. Uh, you have the information, uh, for the graduation and baccalaureate, uh, programs that was provided to you at the last board meeting. Uh, there is an updated, uh, copy, uh, in your packet. There was one change, the one change was for adult ed. So that was the only change to the information that you got in, uh, last board meeting's packet. The second budget work session will be held May the twelfth at six P.M. As Ms. Dowd mentioned, um, we will have some information, uh, from the State Department of Education. Uh, we sat on a webinar, uh, this past week, and we will be sharing some of that information with funding and the funding changes and the impact that it will have on our schools. And some of our outstanding accomplishments that have taken place since our last, uh, board meeting, of course, we had three schools that participated in the Special Olympics at Presbyterian College. Uh, those three schools were Boundary Street Elementary, Whitmire Community School, and Newbury High School. Uh, they had send-offs for their students, had a wonderful, wonderful experience, and we're just excited and looking forward to expanding, uh, next school year. I also had a chance to attend, uh, uh, the Unified Prom at Newbury High on last Friday, and I just, I'm gonna give you a disclaimer, you might see a video out there on social media of the superintendent trying to dance. That is not me, that is A.I.-generated, I'm just gonna let you know.
We can't comment, though.
Please don't. Um, Mid-Carolina High School Band, uh, they walked away with a sup, a superior with distinction rating in Class Three at the South Carolina Band Directors Association Concert Performance Assessment. So Mid-Carolina High School Band deserves a round of applause and for just celebrating this success. And we had artists, five, um, I didn't know what to expect, uh, but what I saw was a group of students representing each one of our high schools. One of them had an original piece of work, and then all of the other four students created something to reinforce that piece of work. Original song, a portrait, uh, there was a culinary dish, and then, uh, there was a, um, there was one more piece, but it was five students performing, and for them to get up on that stage, public speaking is one of the most terrifying things you can do. But when you're speaking, and you're high school age, and you're not just reading something, you're, you're putting yourself out there, you're presenting a work of art that you created for others to critique. Those students deserve a round of applause for their hard work and efforts, for putting on a wonderful show. And if you did not have an opportunity, uh, to, to see it, um, hopefully it will be televised, and we will be able to broadcast it. It was in partnership with Canada, so we're hoping that an S.C.E.T.V. were here, and they recorded not just the student, um, artist five, but we also had the adult version of artist five this past week, as well as, um, this past Saturday at Willingham and Son. So, uh, kudos to the partnership that we have with the Newbury Opera House, um, and all the work that our students are doing. And last but not least, um, I just want to go back to the young man that I recognized, um, and I'm gonna just read what I had written, I should have just read it at the beginning, I butchered it up, but. Asaez Meza scored the winning penalty goal against Luxembourg. The U.S. team played eight games in four days. Over two thousand children from twenty-six different countries were chosen to play in the World Cup. And the level that Asaez played, he was twelve years old, there were fifty teams, the Baraca Carolinas team came in nineteenth place in the tournament, and he represented the U.S., South Carolina, Newbury County, as well as Newbury Middle School. And that young man did an excellent job, and when I tell you, he was proud to be over there, and he was proud to represent Newbury Middle School while he was there. So let's just give everyone a round of applause for the successes that we have had since our last school board meeting. And I have provided a copy of my school visits for, uh, the, for this month, and if you have any questions, I will field those questions at this time. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Madam Chair, I, I was just gonna say, I'd like to add into what Mr. Presley said about the Special Olympics. Um, I took my three grandchildren there, uh, we spent the day there, it, and it was, it was a, a really good event. Um, all of our teachers and the people that helped with that, uh, they, they did an excellent job, the kids had a great time. Uh, the same thing with the Unified Prom, I didn't get out there and dance like Mr. Presley, uh, but I got a lot of pictures, um, and those kids were very, very excited, um, and had a great time. And even though it was during the middle of the day, those kids partied and danced just like it was at nighttime for any prom that I have ever seen at Mid-Carolina High School, and my kids were going. Um, I, I have to hand it to Ms. Harvey and, 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 uh, Ms. Rowe, um, uh, I don't know Holly's last name, so, but, I mean, you know, all those teachers there that did a fabulous job with them getting, you know, everything from getting their gowns to getting their makeup, to getting through, collecting all the food, the decorations, um, and, and for those who have never attended, I would recommend next year to attend that.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrow, you like anything?
I was just going to say that perhaps it would be useful if, uh, Mr. Presley or someone from the district office before the next meeting, maybe a week before the next meeting, sent out a blast to staff and faculty to remind everybody that the documents that we look at are gonna be uploaded to the website. Uh, that's a fairly new process, so I know it's not, a lot of promotions and whatnot has gotten out about it, but they're out there, so, and you're welcome to look it up.
And we will be having some other upgrades to the displays and what else they'll have access.
Okay.
We'll share that with you in the near future.
And, and I appreciated, um, the middle school, I, I, I just happened to see, um, posts from, uh, Newbury Middle School welcoming all the elementary students that are coming, and they really were cheering them on, and I think that's a great thing that they do. And they were cheering people that were going for competitions and whatnot, playing the band as they left the building, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice event.